Good morning, everyone. We'd like to welcome you to the May 13th Mesa City Council Study Session. Either present physically or online are all of our council members I can see. The first item on our agenda for this meeting is to discuss the agenda for our May 17th regular council meeting, so please refer to that document. Council, do you know if there's anything on that document right now that you would like additional information on? Vice Mayor.
I do have a few things noted. First of all, is item 4H on the street sweeper. And I did share some communication with RJ about a possible electric street sweeper, and he is looking into it. But what I just wanted to bring up is, we don't have the infrastructure to support, even if electric was a viable option.
Mayor, Vice Mayor. We don't have the charging capability. I don't know if I'm...
Right.
So that's what we would have to take a look at. So, as I told you yesterday, I'm certainly happy to explore, you know, electric vehicles. I think it's a bigger discussion. Specifically with regard to the sweeper, I'd kind of like to see some other folks use it before we take it on. You know, it's a big piece of equipment. I'm not sure how it's going to hold up in the Arizona heat, but it's certainly worth exploring. So, I think between our Fleet Services staff and talking with our facilities folks, you know, if we think that's a viable option, we can look at installing some infrastructure out at our east yard.
Yeah, that's great. And I just wanted to bring it up, just to note, that we need to start thinking about electrical infrastructure in our fleet maintenance yard, or wherever you store the vehicles, so that we can make those decisions wherever is smart to do that, to have an electric option. The city of Scottsdale did acquire, I think it was through a grant, a compact electric street sweeper. I shared the information with you, and of course, we can look at and see what their experience was for that option. But I just wanted to bring up going forward for any vehicle that we're replacing or adding on, that we can look at electric options.
I'm happy to start a conversation about that.
Yeah. Thank you very much for that consideration.
You're welcome.
Then I have a couple others.
Yes, please.
Also, on 4I regarding the outage management solution, the AMI, the Smart Advanced Meter Infrastructure Smart Metering Initiative. And I know we talked about this during budget. My question was, could you just review again? Is that at the, what do you call, is that at the residential point, or is that at the Where do we monitor where outages occur?
Mayor and Council Frank McQuay with the Energy Resources Department. So initially, the outage management system won't have the benefit of the electric smart meters, so we'll be rolling out the outage management assist system initially with just the existing types of sensors that we have on the system. So it'll be detecting outages at the substation and any type of devices that we have on the circuits and the feeders that go into the neighborhood. We will be utilizing those, but until we get the full implementation of the smart meters, we won't have the benefit of them bringing that data and information into the outage management system, so we can fine tune what's going on with the outage.
So, is this metering system new, or is it just a replacement? Is that new to have it at the substation?
It, well, the metering won't be at the substation. There won't be any new metering at the substation. The metering at the substation will play a very minor role in the outage management system. The other devices throughout the substations and throughout the distribution system will play a role. But the meters will be a new meter, and we'll be replacing the 17,000 or so residential commercial meters throughout the system.
Okay. You can, sometimes I ask questions and then I open account, and where it's like, this is such an enormous amount of knowledge in order to have effective questions. So, I guess my question is, that the advanced meter infrastructure, the smart meter, is this new, or is it replacing existing?
It will be replacing the existing meters.
Okay.
And it will be part of the larger smart meter program that the city's going with both gas and water and electric.
So, Mayor and Vice Mayor, so your question is about the meters. Today, the meters that we have currently installed throughout the city will eventually all be changed out to the smart meters. And that's Candace, and several of our staff have been working on that, working on identifying the vendor, the software. So that will be rolled out, and we'll be talking more about that in the years to come. But that will take years to roll out. And so it's a balance of the opportunity for the new technology. Right now, we are not connected to individual meters, right? It takes a meter reader to go out to the location to read the meter. The smart meter will allow us not only to receive the information that this meter reader gets today about consumption, but it will help Frank and the others also to know about if there's an outage. And now they'll be able to have a very precise information about where there may be an outage at a specific block, a specific home. That will have that constant feedback from that smart meter. So that's to come. We're working on that. Now, again, that's going to be, can you imagine replacing, how many meters do we have, Candace? Water, sewer, gas? What's the total citywide utility number? Do we know what that number is?
Oh, what is that number? That's about 200,000 meters.
200,000 meters that have to be replaced. So we're gonna, I mean, but we're gonna start. And that gets to, I think maybe your question is, all of those are gonna be new meters. The good news is that we've replaced meters today.
Almost all. We do have water that are compatible.
Okay, yeah, right. So some of the water meters that we're replacing today will be compatible. So, anyway, that's where we're headed with the smart meters. Until that time, Frank will have to receive that information at, he can't get that information right now with this at the homes. Once those are replaced in his service area, then that information will be direct, will be associated directly to an address. Is that correct, Frank?
Correct. And so the information that we'll be relying upon until then is the existing equipment and devices that we have, and some new devices that we'll be installing throughout the system. They just won't be at the meter at the point of consumption on the residence or the business.
Right. So I'm asking on this purchase, it's just the infrastructure? I mean, what is the first of that initiative to get to? So...
So Mayor and Vice Mayor, this, the one that's on the agenda for Monday is the outage management system itself. That's the software that would sit. This is the software, the integrations into our existing, into Frank's existing systems. So this is a software. They're really parallel projects, the outage management system and the smart metering system. These, the outage management system is coming to you first. The smart metering contract we hope to bring to you at the, after, in about August, August, beginning of September. So they're really parallel projects. This is really a software system and implementation, integrations into everything that we have today, so that, so that Environment and Energy Resources can receive that information directly. Just not from the homes yet, but they can receive it from the other distribution points that they have.
Okay, that makes sense to understand it from a software perspective of what we're purchasing. So thank you for that explanation. Then I had one last question, is about capital improvements, and it's more about, we had a, I thought there was a presentation on, attached to the five-year capital improvement program, item 10B.
And Mayor and Vice Mayor, we actually do have a presentation on that item, if you'd like to give that.
Great, thank you.
I just was, I was waiting till we kind of got to that part of the agenda, but we're, Mayor, when you're ready, we can, we have staff prepared to make a presentation on that.
Thank you. I do know that there's a couple of things on our agenda Monday, including DMA that we have a presentation on, and then the CIP program, which we have a presentation on. Council, other than those two items, any other questions about Monday night's agenda? Mr. Thompson, Mr. Luna? Okay.
Hi, Mayor, we're good.
Okay. Thank you. Then why don't we, I think the order that we have them agendized in for today's meeting is to start with DMA, but we already, well, but we already have the...
Yeah, it's just, this item is on the agenda. It's not agendized separately, Mayor, the CIP, because it's on the council agenda. So, if that's okay, let's go in this order, and then we'll bring DMA up, and they're going to speak to more than just the item on the agenda. They want to give a broader presentation for DMA.
Sounds good. Thank you. Please proceed.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. Brian Richel with the Office of Management and Budget. Alongside me, I have Justin Stanton, who is also with the Office of Management and Budget. So this presentation before you today kind of encapsulates and does a review of the two presentations I did, presented to you before on April 1st, and then also April 15th. This just combines it all as a recap before for the agenda item on Monday. So to give kind of a brief overview of the capital improvement program process, so the city council annually approves the five-year capital program per the city charter. And I have approves underlined, because that's kind of what the council, the council gives us direction for that five-year program. It's not an adoption of the five-year program. It really, it's an approval by council to move forward with that program. As mentioned, projects and timing of projects may change from year to year in that program based on either city priorities or available funding. So projects within that program may move up, may be postponed, just depending on the timing and the funding of those projects. So it's really an approval to move forward with that program. As mentioned, each year, we do come back with a revised program for consideration by council. Now, for, the city council then will adopt just fiscal year 21, 22's budget. So that's where, it only adopts the budget for that fiscal year, for the program. So you're not adopting 2022, 23, and on. You're only really adopting the 21, 22 amounts of that program. And each project in that program does come before council for consideration. So if there's another, so when each project does come forward, even though you adopt the whole, the budget for that year, each project will come forward for approval or for consideration by council. So the next slide is the pie charts, just to give you an idea of the fiscal year 21, 22, and kind of the percentages of each source of, for the one on the left. So as you, as you notice, the utility revenue bonds are a big portion of that pie, and then local revenues is the second largest, along with general obligation bonds. And then you notice in the 20, the five-year program, the 22 to 26 utilities is a big portion, and then also the general obligation and local revenues. And this is kind of what you've seen before, just projects that, CIP projects that are in the 21, 22 budget. They're either continuing throughout the program, or they're just starting. And so as mentioned, we've got the city center, some library improvements, we have the historic post office, and then also Red Mountain Park expansion. And then on the public safety side, we have some fire apparatus replacements, and then also Fire Station 221. And then on the transportation side, we have Broadway Road, Sossman and Baseline, and Signal Butte, just to name a few. And then on the utility side, on water, we have the Central Mesa Reuse Pipeline, Signal Butte, the water treatment plant expansion. And then we also have the Northwest Water Reclamation Plant, major plant improvements, just to name a few for, on the water resources side. And then on energy resources, for natural gas, we have the Queen Creek Gate Station, and then also Southern Avenue to Country Club improvements. And then on the electric side, we have some substation improvements, along with some electrical undergrounding. So those are the major projects that are in the fiscal year 21, 22 proposed budget. As you see on the next slide of the, this kind of puts the numbers to the previous slides of the pie and the projects. And then, as I mentioned on Monday, the adoption is just for fiscal year 21, 22, but then for the CIP approval as part of the charter, it's the whole program, which is the second column, which is the 22 through 26 CIP. I know that was kind of brief, but it was just a brief overview of the CIP, and I'm available for questions if there are.
Thank you. So again, this is on our agenda for Monday as a, we're having a public hearing, just approving or introducing the CIP budget.
Mayor, Council, that is correct, yes.
Council, any questions? Vice Mayor?
I did have a question. I know we have the schedule on this with all, everything listed out, which is a lot of pages, a lot of pages. So, I was wondering, for me, do you have a total for the water projects? What that consists of? The Central Mesa Reuse Pipeline, which I believe was like around 100 million?
Vice Mayor, for just this year, or for the full five years?
No, just for the 21, 22 CIP projects. On slide seven, page nine.
So it's a combination of bonds and also capital. So we would have to add it up for just the water. So water utility bonds. It's about 146 million total for the water. So we have the bonds that are at 73.4, and then we have some other ones up top. The wastewater and water, yes. So down at the bottom of the schedule, that's attached to the resolution. Kind of the resolution also has a two-page attachment for that. And if we add up the wastewater and water, it's about a, about 140, 146 million dollars for both water, for water resources, wastewater and water.
So we know the Central Mesa Reuse Pipeline, or maybe it's not being expended all in one year, but the total...
That is correct.
Oh, okay.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, that is correct. So it's, so a lot of, like, the bigger projects will expand multiple years. We'll start it coming up in this next fiscal year, but it'll span multiple fiscal years. So we put the budget in there, but then it'll, it's part of the program itself.
Okay. So, I don't want to put you on the spot, but could you follow up with me? The cost of those water projects alone over the total project, however many years it takes, maybe it's five years or whatever.
Any one project, or?
The Central Mesa Reuse Pipeline, which I know I have an estimate on that. The East Mesa Water Interconnect Pipes, which I have no idea. The Signal Butte Water Treatment Plant Expansion, I could guess, is probably over 100 million. I don't know. But just those three of, like, what we're spending on water infrastructure. And you can follow up with me. I don't mean to take the time or put you on the spot right now.
Well, and there'll be projects. I'm assuming we have built in there the replacement of quarter sections that water has for doing, you know, upgrading pipe throughout the city also.
We do.
Those are the big proj, do you just want those big projects, or you want everything related to water?
Those projects in particular.
Okay, all right, all right. I just want to make sure, because that'll be a subset, a big portion, but there are a lot of other water projects out there. Okay.
Yeah, the Mayor, Council, the list I have here on the slides is just the major projects of those. There's other, like, water lines, replacements of wastewater lines and of that, but then also like for energy resources, there's a bunch of undergrounding and things like that that are going on too. These were just the major projects.
We can get you those summers.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Any other questions regarding the CIP budget or the present, the hearing on Monday night? All right, thank you very much.
Mayor, I failed to mention to Council, there will be an item added to the agenda Monday. If you recall, last Thursday, we had a presentation from our housing staff regarding additional ESG dollars that were coming to the city, and the council was good with the direction moving forward. HUD is asking us that we take action as soon as possible to get that authorization from the council. So that $4 million in ESG CV2 dollars will be added to your agenda for Monday, so that we can get those approved by council. HUD's asked us to, we, I think, had a schedule of doing it in June, and they've asked us if we could move that further ahead. They want to keep moving those dollars out. So, anyway, we're just going to add that to your agenda on Monday. So thank you.
I assume that can be on the consent agenda?
Yes, we'll just add that on the consent, yeah.
Is that all right with you, Council, to have that, given that we've already, we already know a lot about that, and we're just giving the federal government permission to give us money?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Council, any other questions regarding Monday's agenda? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move to the next item on the agenda for this meeting. That's item 2A, which is to hear a presentation about the Downtown Mesa Association, the services they provide, and a vision for future services, and about the special improvement district assessments that fund the DMA operations. Nancy, have you been to these meetings before?
No, I have not.
Everybody, I don't, I don't think, Nancy needs an introduction. Nancy is the head of the Downtown Mesa Association, along with our Director of Downtown Transformation. I was struggling on that word. Jeff McVay.
Morning, Mayor.
Two of the busiest people in the city.
Morning, Mayor, Council. Again, Jeff McVay, Manager of Downtown Transformation. With me today is Nancy Horman, our Executive Director and President of the Downtown Mesa Association. On Monday, items 9A and 9B are public hearing and approval of the annual assessment for the Downtown Mesa Association. That agenda item is specific to the assessments, but we thought it's about time that we bring DMA over here to present and talk to you about what those assessments actually accomplish and what they do with them. While, while Mayor's correct, and most people know Nancy, I'm going to still take a couple minutes to break her up a little bit. Nancy comes to us with 35-plus years of experience running downtown associations, starting with, you know, starting the first association in California with the city of Sacramento, then moving on to San Diego, spending time in Dallas, and Raleigh, North Carolina.
San Francisco. Not San Diego.
That's it. It's a San. San Francisco. Before finishing her career in downtown Tempe and retiring, we did lure her over to work with us after a leadership change at our Downtown Mesa Association. And, and she was only going to do an executive search for us. She was going to help us find a new executive director, and luckily enough for us, we, we made her fall in love with Downtown Mesa, and she committed to come and work with us for, for a year, maybe a year and a half, if we can twist her arm a little bit. And in that amount of time, the partnership between the city and DMA has become even stronger, and we are accomplishing things, great things. And I wanted to give Nancy a chance to, to talk about what DMA does, what our plans are in the future, and, and what we see long-term. And with that, I'm going to hand over to Nancy.
Mayor, Vice Mayor Duff, council members, Mr. Brady, a pleasure to be here today. And Jeff is right, I did fall in love with Downtown Mesa. It's just amazing, and what's going on right now just blows me away. But what I wanted to do was kind of talk to you about, now, do I hit the button? Okay, you go. Go. Okay. Is just, talking about just the assessments and what we do, is that the private property owners in 1984 voted to create this Enhanced Municipal Services District. You were the first one in Arizona, and we hold it up, all of us hold it up to, thank you Mesa for doing this for the first one. The private property owners pay 304,000 of it, and then you, as the city, pay your fair share assessment for your properties in the downtown. So that is, there was an arrangement made with how much you were going to pay. And then on top of that, we have two other contracts with you that we're going to talk about. And one is for parking compliance. I do not call it enforcement. It is compliance, much nicer. People won't yell at you. And then cleaning the parking lots and the garages. So what we've done next, we, I came in as a consultant to look at the organization and to make sure that everything was in compliance with the EMSD statute from the state. What we looked at next is that there was a strained relationship between the DMA and the organization that was set up to do events, Ultimate Imagination Inc. And on top of that, what I discovered is there was no partnership between any of those and the city, which is, this is supposed to be a public-private partnership. It was not. So what we did next was we created a new structure, which was much more inclusive for everyone to work together. And that has the UII, the DMA, and the city working together with one executive committee to oversee the whole thing. So everyone knows what everyone else is doing. We make the decisions together. And then on top of that, what we did was, we took the DMA, which by state statute, has to be governed by those who pay, meaning the property owners. So we split the board into next, two different boards. The first one was the Property Owners Board, and that is the executive committee with the representatives from each of the other boards on that next. And then after that, we have our Downtown Business Owners Board. And it's, Council Member Duff serves on the first one, and Jeff serves on the Business, the Property Owners Board, so that we have this cooperation going on at every level, and it really has worked. We have a great public-private partnership, and I'm not trying to blow smoke at anybody here, but I have worked in many cities, and I have never had a partnership like we have here at the city right now. This is amazing, and I think between all of us, we're going to accomplish some great things. So, the team is, when I came on board, I brought in some people. What people don't understand about downtown associations is that it's an industry and a profession. It is not just, let's put on a show. So what we, I did is I brought in professionals who have all, almost every one of them worked for another downtown association. We have someone from Santa Barbara, we have someone from Chandler, and we have someone from Tempe, who all now work in our downtown. And it has been great, because we hit the ground running, instead of having to educate them on what a business improvement district is and what it's supposed to do. So the first thing we did was, we took the money that you guys contribute for the cleaning of the parking garages and the lots. We added the property owner assessment dollars to it, and we created what was called the Clean Sweep Program. I'm sure you guys, if you've been down here, see these blue uniformed people on the streets. They are cleaning all the time, every time. We are six days a week right now, and Sundays are getting so busy that next year, in our next fiscal budget, we are putting more money towards that in order to add someone on Sundays too. So it's really been very successful. And what, we applied for some CARES Act money as part of that. We got to buy some great equipment. At the bottom picture you see there is one of our trucks, which is branded with both the city and DMA, because we are a partner. But that enabled us to take one of our Clean Sweep people using the money and train them as a homeless outreach coordinator. So they are able to go and talk to, not only are they out there cleaning, but they also go and help find placements, work with the navigators to try to put people in places to help them. So that was the first thing we did. Then we had partnerships with two different organizations, one being Evolve, which is our public relations firm, the second one being Entertainment Solutions, which is the same company that the city works with to do all of the special events. They have been wonderful in helping us to transition, to have a professional event production team doing our events downtown. Even though we did only small events this year, we're hoping to come out of this to do some major downtown events. The media, what you can see here is, this is only from December till now. We have gotten so much media exposure, and it's not just because of the team that's putting it out, it's because of what's happening in Downtown Mesa right now. We are top of mind, and the best thing that's happened out of this is the press now calls us and says, what's going on? What do you have for us? We don't have to push things at them as hard as we used to. Right now, they're coming to us. So the next thing we did was, we built a new website. Our website was old and antiquated and didn't really work and do much for us. So we created a new one, new things, and it is very interactive. The first things I'm going to talk about is all the partnership we have for this website. On our dining guide, we are now linked with a new program that the Economic Development Department is doing to promote dining and shopping downtown, and their landing page for all of their promotions are our website. So it's a wonderful connection there. The other thing is, the, every merchant downtown gets its own page on our website. That page and that listing is linked to the new kiosks. So all the kiosks always have all the businesses, walking, bold businesses, that they can get to from that kiosk that they're looking at, and it's constantly updated, because we constantly update the website. And then the fun thing, and you can't see it very well on here, and I encourage you to go to the website and try this, but if you were to link on one of our businesses down there, and we, example here was El Vaneo, what it does is, it tells you where all the nearby shopping is, where the nearby restaurants are, and most importantly, where is the closest place to park? And it tells you by feet how far away these parking garages or parking lots are. And it tells you by feet how far away these parking garages or parking lots are. And that's a real good way to get people to understand. They always think parking's so far away, you know, you're parking so much closer in a downtown than you are in a shopping center, but that's, perception is reality, and perception is, they have to walk too far. So. The next thing we did was a new gift card program. We had some paper, non-traceable, non-trackable gift cards that were very hard to deal with. We put in a professional gift card program. Over 35 of our businesses immediately signed up for it. In the first three months that we did this, well, it was five months altogether, we sold over $17,000 worth of gift cards, which was quadruple what they sold in the whole year last year. So it's very, and this is direct benefit to our merchants, because this is money that you go, they go spend in the stores. And then when we opened the farmer's market, 12 of our market vendors also take the gift cards. So it's really very, it's used very much in the downtown. And we did some holiday promotions. This year, we couldn't, because of COVID, we didn't do a lot of special events, but we wanted to keep things active. So we, first thing, when I first came on board, I did a partnership with the MAC, and they did that wonderful Ray Villain Halloween thing with the pumpkins and all the windows. It was so successful and so exciting to watch the people walk downtown, that we replicated that with a snow globe hunt and a cupid hunt for Valentine's Day, just to keep people to come downtown, not in big groups, socially distanced. There's things all over the sidewalks to keep them socially distanced. And it really did help also with the PR. I mean, it's just amazing with the continuation of the PR. Then working with Jeff's team, we had a brainstorm one day while sitting at Mary Main Street and seeing the beautiful little plaza that was there, and we decided, what can we do to help our restaurants? So we created a big extension of premise for all of our restaurants downtown, where they could, people could get their food, go and sit in this wonder little outdoor cafe, which extended the use for everybody, because all of our outdoor cafes were packed, which was exciting. So we created more space for them to do that. We also created a downtown dash program, which was a golf cart that the mayor got to deliver one of our things, but you could order from any of our restaurants downtown and call it in, and our golf cart would go pick it up and bring it to them. And so you could eat from any downtown restaurant in our Al Fresco. It was incredibly successful, and it was a partnership with the MAC, the city, everybody came together to make this happen. The next thing we did was working with the Parks Department, and they helped us do this tremendously. We did movies on that same plaza to bring families down. We're doing it on Saturday nights when we're filled in the bars, but we're not bringing families down for the dinner hour. So this was about bringing families down, they would eat in the restaurants, then they would come to the movie. And we brought princesses one week and superheroes the next week, and the next movie is Harry Potter, so we'll be bringing families. And it was very successful, we sold out all of them within two days. And the parks provided the projector, the screen, the setup, it was great. Then we took the farmer's market, moved it from the park and into our district, into the fabulous location at the MAC. It's so beautiful there. We doubled the sales in the first four weeks. People were coming, it's slowing down a little bit now because it's hot. And, but we are one of the only markets that goes year-round, so we have picked up more for more farmers because they left the other markets to come down, so we're excited. We are no longer, we started out as a farmer market, but now we are a farmer's market. Okay, so our goals now for the next year, to continue to do what we've been doing, but on top of that, we have noticed that during COVID, there's a new thing that has happened in our downtown, is because of our empty streets, we were kind of taken over a little bit by a lot more homeless than we ever saw before. We've seen a lot of vandalism in the last couple of months. We've even had homeless people walking down the sidewalks and taking food off of people's plates in the outdoor cafes. So it's a new thing for downtown Mesa, downtown Tempe has been experiencing this for a very long time. But coming from downtown San Francisco, we don't have a big homeless problem here. It's all relative. But perception is reality. So what we've done is we've put in an application to try to create a downtown engagement officer program. It's an ambassador, they're out there, they're trained for the homeless, they are there to make people feel comfortable, not uncomfortable if someone is panhandling them, they feel good about not giving them money and giving them some sort of, we give them information, where to get help, what do you do? How can we help versus how do we just perpetuate this? So we felt that in order to change that perception, we needed to create a new reality. So we are hoping in the next budget year to launch this program. The next thing that we, the DMA is contracted to run the parking permit program and the parking compliance program, and during COVID, another, it was incredibly, and I will admit, neglected. The program is a little bit of a mess right now, and I think one of the reasons is because it was not professionally managed. It was, there's now four databases we have to go to in order to put information in. We have people who are asking, have one parking permit and said they have other cars, so some people have as many as eight permits for one car. We really are hoping in the next budget year to pull all the permits back in, start over again, doing it with possibly hang tags, so if you have more than one car, you take your hang tag out and put it in your other car. We don't need to give everybody permits for all of that. But we need to look at getting a professional management system with professional software to run a program. We are not here to do things half-assed anymore, we want to do things professionally. And then the next thing we need to do is after five years, you always have to renew the district. When renewed, looking at the district, I have created 22 districts across Arizona and California. And what I can tell you is our assessment methodology, after being done in 1984, is no longer relevant in this downtown. The buildings aren't the same, the services are not the same, and a lot of people are paying more than their fair share, and a lot of people are paying less than their fair share. So instead of just renewing the district as it is, we are going to go out to the ratepayer community, we're going to ask them, what do they want if they live in the best of all possible worlds, but out of that, what are they willing to pay for? And then we need to design a fair and equitable assessment methodology to bring the right type of funds to downtown. I've worked in a lot of downtowns, this is one of, besides Dallas and San Francisco, but one of the biggest downtowns. We have one of the smallest budgets I've ever seen in a downtown organization, and we can accomplish so much more, but we need to figure out how we can get those funds and what kind of partnerships we can come up with in order to create more synergy in our downtown and do more programs. So that will be done, and we'll be coming to council with that, hopefully, in the next budget year. And then our goals are to do events, but we've put together a team of our downtown businesses who are working with us to design a new signature event for downtown. And we didn't want to design it, we wanted the people who need to benefit from this to work with us to design it. So we're talking to them about, what works for you in an event, what doesn't work for you in an event? How do we make this work for you? So I always ask them to put on their community hat, and then take that off and put their selfish hat on, too, because if it doesn't work for them selfishly, too, they're not going to want to do it, and it's not going to be successful. So we will be putting that in, as well as continually to do some things, but we're going to open slowly as we come here, so we're going to still be doing a lot of promotional events to keep the activities going downtown. Our public relations, we now, as we open up, we want to start doing broker briefings, bringing brokers down here, showing them what's going on, trying to attract more retail down here, bringing media tours down, and getting people to visit us. And of course, we need to continually professionalize the DMA to get it out of a non-professional organization into something that is going to work for all of us to make downtown even better. We, I will be, at the end of this year, conducting a search for your permanent executive director, but we are working on a succession plan right now to make sure that it's smooth, that we never go through what we're going through right now. Our biggest thing that we say in our office every day is, we don't know what we don't know. So what we want to do is figure out what we don't know, and then move smoothly on after that. That's where we are right now, and any questions?
Thank you. Wonderful and inspiring presentation, Nancy. We're so glad you're here, and Downtown Mesa is a wonderful story. I wish, yesterday I was at lunch at downtown, and I kept thinking, I wish I could go to multiple lunches a day in Downtown Mesa, there's just so much good here to see. So I'll kick it off by just saying, to me, it seems like Downtown Mesa, sadly, we used to talk about the potential of Downtown Mesa. We don't talk about potential anymore because it's been realized, and it's just fun to see, to be caught up in the enthusiasm of what's happening. I think Downtown Mesa has now become a point of pride for everybody, no matter where they live in the city. We used to have some people say, well, why would I care about downtown? I never go downtown. Those people, that's not the issue anymore. I think everyone considers Downtown Mesa their living room, this is where they want to bring their relatives when they come in from out of town. So it's fun to see that happen, and clearly DMA needs to be much more than it has been. And so I certainly endorse what you're doing and the idea that we're going to, that you're going to leave it better than you found it. So, so thank you so much. Obviously, there are some significant challenges, and you've identified those. We need to, we've aspired to have a parking problem in Downtown Mesa for a long time now, and it's happening.
You're having one.
So, so thank you for bringing a professional approach to that, and we do need to figure that out, obviously. Homelessness, as in every downtown, is certainly increasing. I love your approach. When we see that happening, the question is, what can we do to help? Which, you know, not, how do we get this person out of here as fast as possible, but the solution is what can we do to help that person? And that will help everyone when we do that. So I certainly endorse what your presentation, very appreciative for what you and Jeff are doing in our downtown, and anxious to see you be successful. So the item that's on our agenda for Monday is just our regular assessment hearing.
Right.
And the, as I understand it, the strategy is status quo for this year.
Yes.
And then we'll come back next year and propose some more significant changes to scale it to where it needs to be.
Right. We didn't feel it was an appropriate time to ask people to pay more money.
Yeah. Great, thank you. Vice Mayor, I know you've got.
Of course I have, I've got a lot to say. Downtown is literally my living room. I live just a couple of blocks away and been so passionate about it for, and one of the primary reasons I ran for council is to see its development off. But I love your statement at the beginning of the presentation, said, a new energy for a new economy. And from where we were a year or two ago, before Nancy came on, it is night and day. And I cannot say thank you enough, and thank our lucky stars to have you come in and turn over this downtown, to catch up to where we are in our development, and really launch Downtown Mesa as a destination. And you have done that in so many things in a short amount of time. I appreciate everything that you have done, and I appreciate the partnership also with Jeff.
It's not just me. When you're talking to me, you're talking to him, too.
There's a whole team going on here, and between the two of you, you have really remarkably launched downtown, like I said, so I can't say thank you enough. I do want to ask for the benefit of everybody who may not be as familiar with the Downtown Mesa Association, that your boundaries of the territory in which you take care of, so that we're all aware of that.
The boundaries are university to Broadway, from Mesa to country club. We are one square mile, but most of this is done in zones, so the major zone in our assessment district is Main Street, and then it goes down from there.
Great, great. I don't have a lot of questions, I appreciate being on the board and the work of the entire team. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, other questions for these folks? All right. Well, again, thank you so much, we're happy to be part of your team, and look forward to working with you closely going forward.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is item 2B. This is to hear an update from the city manager on employee compensation, focusing on fire personnel and budget impacts, and provide direction for the city's 2122 budget. Mr. Brady.
Thank you, Mayor. I have Candice and Mike come on and help me out. Council, I wanted to just bring you up to speed on the development of the budget for this year, and just kind of some components that we've been working on that I want to bring you up to date, specifically as it relates to compensation for firefighters. And to do that, I wanted to step back a little bit, back to January of 2021. If you recall, we obviously were still in the pandemic, we had typically, well, we would say normally, in a typical budget year, the city would budget and allocate pay raises for employees that usually effectively take place on the first pay period in July. But in that time period, obviously, we were still in the middle of the pandemic, we weren't certain about the city's finances. So we suspended the increase in pay back in July of 2020. However, as we made it through the summer and we're heading into the fall, we recognized that the city's financial position was doing much better than we anticipated. So when we, we made the decision then in January, for the January 2021 calendar year, the beginning of that, we did multiple things to address employee pay and make sure we were staying competitive. The first thing that we did is we made an adjustment to the range of pay, specifically, we'll talk about firefighters today, that we adjusted that range by 5%. So it meant that the beginning salary was adjusted up 5%, as well as the maximum salary for that position was adjusted up by 5% beginning in January of 2021. And then what we, what we did is that we made the decision to also implement what we had suspended from July, the 3% step pay. So that was put in place. Now, the order of that was very important. It was important for us to first adjust the pay ranges up by 5%. And one of the reasons, before we implemented the step pay, we did that with specific intention because we, at the time, we had, let's say, about 40% of our firefighters who were at the top of the range, they were making the maximum amount within that range. So when we made the adjustment in January to increase that range by 5%, we did that first, and then implemented the 3% step pay that had been scheduled in July. What that allowed then is for every firefighter to receive the 3% step pay back in January of 2021. So that's the first thing we did. We also recognized that we had, the impact of the pandemic on the city's finances hadn't been as significant as we anticipated. So we wanted to also kind of look back to say, employees had not received that 3% increase back in July, and so we wanted to figure out a way to, what's the right word? Compensate them for that period of time. So what we did, in order to simplify it, we came up with an amount which was a little more than about a 3%, so that in January, we also provided a $2,000 non-recurring compensation to all firefighters. So that was an important milestone for us as far as compensation for firefighters and all employees, but certainly by adjusting the ranges by 5%, providing for the 3% step pay, but now by doing the increase in the ranges allowed all employees, even those who had been sitting at the maximum pay, to receive a 3%. And by the way, they'll receive the other 2% this coming July. And then we also, for those that are at the top of the range, but we also provided a $2,000 check, which for the average firefighter was equivalent to a little bit more than actually 3%. So that's what we did back in January of this year, so we tried to address that. After we made that adjustment, in our discussions with our local fire union president, he indicated a con- he indicated a concern that there were a group of firefighters, and we'll just refer to them as the, kind of the middle of the tenure of the firefighters, specifically in years with six to 10 years of experience. As they looked at them compared to firefighters in other cities, namely, and specifically Chandler, the difference between the pay that was being given to a firefighter in Mesa at year six, seven, eight, nine, and 10 was less than what someone in Chandler would be making for that same tenure. So we had, we looked at that and over some time and after trying to understand specifically what that gap was, we've also worked very hard to try to figure out how to identify that need. Now, let me be clear, and you'll see in the presentation later. A Mesa firefighter who is at the bottom of the range, who is just starting out for the first three or four years, actually makes more than almost any other firefighter in the valley because our minimum is so high. After about 10 years, our firefighters, because our range is so high on the max, also make more. And we will have about 20% of our firefighters at the end of, sorry, at the, beginning in July of this year, will be at the top of the range, meaning they will be making, 20% of our firefighters will be making more than any other firefighter, almost any other firefighter in the valley. So I think we've tried to be competitive, but we also wanted to hear the concerns that were expressed to us. So we have provided a five-year deal. So on slide three, you see the first two years that are being presented. First, we are proposing that all eligible employees of the rank of firefighter, engineer, and captain will receive the 3% step pay, which will be effective the first pay period of each fiscal year, which is beginning in July. And to address the concern specifically about the time period of that year, six through 10, when a Mesa firefighter will be making less than a Chandler firefighter, we've agreed that over a two-year period, most of the, we will close that gap, right? We will take those specific employees, we've identified those employees now. We've shared the information with our local union to specifically identify the individuals and the pay that they're getting now and the difference between what they make currently in Mesa versus Chandler, for example, and identified that difference. And we will begin to address that beginning in July to close that gap. Again, let me remind you, those same firefighters were making more than a Chandler firefighter for their first three years of their career. And after year 10 or 11 or 12, they will be making more than a Chandler firefighter. We actually, if you look at it over a 15-year period, a Mesa firefighter actually makes more than almost any other firefighter in the valley. But certainly during years six through 10, we've identified there's a difference. But the cumulative number, even today, a Mesa firefighter makes more. This resolution that we're proposing with the 3% step pay for the next two years and reconciling the difference will even further advance Mesa firefighter to be making very competitive salary cumulatively versus other firefighters in the valley. Then what we've also suggested, that once we have all of those firefighters, if you would say, caught up during that period of, for the first two years with the Chandler firefighter, what we're proposing is that for years 23, 24, 24, 25, 25, and 26, so the next three years, is that we would include in our five-year forecast the assumption to provide a 5% step pay increase for the rank of firefighter, engineer, and captain. That will keep us maintaining that competitiveness so that we don't fall behind again for those specific ranks. And again, if you looked at it cumulatively, years one through 15, a Mesa firefighter will be making as much or more than the average firefighter in the valley. As that stands today, the information we have today, based on the survey information we have today. Here's kind of going back into the details of that, how we came to those conclusions, the information that was used. This is information that was provided to both sides between the minimum and the minimum salary for different cities that we compare to. You can tell that Mesa is very competitive on the minimum and we're certainly above the average pay. On the maximum salary, again, you see the competitiveness of Mesa as being the highest, having the highest maximum range for any city in the comparative cities and certainly well above the current average. And then again, another way of looking at this is the average. Mesa is just above the average pay for all firefighters. I mean, you can see that on this chart here. We also wanted to share with counsel just kind of an overall perspective of the fire department, fire medical department's adopted budget over the last five years. Five years ago, the fire medical department, along with their capital, had a budget of over, just over $77 million. The proposed budget that is before the council today, that budget has increased to almost $131 million. So certainly it's fair to say and with, I think we're very proud to be able to say that the city of Mesa has always prioritized public safety. And I think this chart demonstrates that commitment over a five-year period of time. And that's included, you know, the assumption of the council approving the budget will have one of the highest budgets we've ever had for the fire department, ever for the city of Mesa. So that's my presentation, Mayor. If there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer those.
Thank you, Mr. Brady. I'll just kick it off by saying, I hope that our employees are watching this, specifically the fire employees, because I'm anxious for them to get the message that the city of Mesa values our employees, specifically our public safety employees. We take very seriously our responsibility to be good employers. We consider our employees to be the city of Mesa. And so I want them to know that this is a priority of this council. We are committed to having fair and competitive salaries and wages for our employees. Again, that's, I know I speak for everyone on this council and I say that's a priority of ours. It is unfortunate, but I'm glad we have, I appreciate the union bringing to our attention this, that we fell behind on some of our mid-year, our mid-tenured firefighters. And I just want to say to them, we will fix this, period. That's not going to be a problem going forward. I think Mr. Brady has indicated a willingness on the administration and I know it's supported by this council to rectify that. So we're not going to play games. We're just going to fix it. And going forward, I appreciate the fact that we're committed to having larger raises than we have in previous years to make sure that this situation doesn't reoccur. And I know Mr. Brady didn't mention it, but part of the plan is benchmarking it, benchmarking going forward, Mr. Brady, so that every couple of years, we will be doing market comparisons with all of our employees, but specifically with public safety employees to make sure that we remain competitive and that we are providing a fair and competitive salary. I just want to also point out that we understand that our public safety personnel, particularly our firefighters, are not, they don't have a normal job. They have extraordinary demands in their profession. We understand that. And we are grateful for their service, particularly in the context of the last year as we've seen them really rise to the challenge of providing exceptional service during the pandemic. So I think this is a great start. I think the, I know I speak for Mr. Brady when I say that the door remains open to all of our employees and employee groups. But I appreciate the response that Mr. Brady has identified to the problem that's been pointed out. Counsel, any other comments on this? Mr. Freeman.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I appreciate our management for having a candid conversation with our public safety employees because I know it's kind of been tenuous and a little difficult, but they've brought forth, as the mayor said, the opportunity to discuss this pay gap, as I call it, for the certain amount of people here in our organization. So I appreciate what's been said so far and I'm supportive of this. I think it's important to remedy this as fast as possible so that our public safety personnel, fire being the first ones, that they can know that we're working for them and we appreciate their service. So with that, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Yes, Frankie.
What's the average of a firefighter tenure? Do most last, like Mr. Freeman here, our colleague? What was it, 30 years or?
I would imagine most of our firefighters continue till they retire.
Till retire.
So I don't know what that number, is that what you're asking is?
Yeah, like how long do, like the average tenure of a firefighter?
Yeah, we don't have a lot of attrition in firefighters until they get to about 20 years or so, then they're eligible for retirement.
I might just say about 25 to 30 years.
A drop and everything.
Yeah.
And there's some new implementation that you cannot retire before 25 years of service for new hires?
So and to that point, Counsel, I think that's why we've always made the point that by having the highest maximum, our firefighters can earn more after about 10 years and certainly well and then above that for a long period of time, that they're earning the highest salary in the valley. And then what, not only does that help them during the time that they're working for the city of Mesa, but also is important because that's how their pension numbers are determined. And so as you look at slide six, right now, our firefighters are in a very strong position to earn as much or more than most of the other cities in the valley. But also that continues to provide a benefit to them in the calculation of their pension, obviously, and that continues long after they stay with the city.
Oh, go ahead. No, go ahead.
I also really appreciate this. Thank you. I think it's important to come up with a solution. So just for my mind, does this mean that our firefighters will max out earlier than, if we increase the pay during those six to 10 years, they'll max earlier than they would have?
It just means they'll move up to the top possibly sooner than normally. But that's what's happening. You can tell in a lot of these other cities, that's kind of a philosophy that they move closer to their max.
Earlier.
Earlier, within fewer years. Over the last five or six years, and I think the local union brought this up, because of fiscal constraints for the city, all employees have been constrained to having maybe 3% and 4% pay increases. And I think while other public safety personnel at other cities have seen the 5% increases, that's what's created the difference. And so what we're trying to do is reconcile that difference, but at the same time recognizing, we kind of get a head start because we start out higher and then we also finish stronger because our employees make more. But we're going to fix that part in the middle. And then I think that's why we wanted to add on to the fiscal years out into the future, that commitment, which has always been important about this idea of being competitive on the annual increase. And that's why you see the last three years at 5%. That seems to be the norm. And I think what we're making is a strong commitment to make that commitment now for those last three years.
Okay. And then another question. Do all cities have just similar benefits? And do benefits ever come into play with how much people make or how much, is that just a?
Absolutely, they do. And they're similar, but not. I mean, they can be, every city determines their own package of benefits and deductibles and premiums and availability. And that's where it's really difficult. And then you have to look in specifically in the fire department, I'll let Mr. Freeman speak, because there's all kinds of certifications you can receive, there's opportunities for overtime. So there's a lot of other, beyond this component piece of salary, there's a lot of other variables that allow a firefighter or any rank in the department to earn additional dollars.
But none of that comes into play on a chart like this?
The only thing, this becomes the base by which some of those are calculated as percentages or to that point, yes.
Mayor, I just wondered if you needed a motion or just an acknowledgement to move forward with this plan?
Well, Mr. Smith, I believe, because this is adding some additional direction to staff for our budget, that it would be appropriate for us to make a motion and direct staff to make these additional budget allocations to address firefighter compensation. So is that correct, Mr. Smith?
Yeah, and specifically for this next fiscal year, a motion to include the staff recommendations for this next fiscal year.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor.
Before we take that vote, I just wanted to ask to make sure that we're at a satisfactory position with the fire union on this. So we take a motion and I don't, you know, want the pushback.
Well, Mayor, Vice Mayor, I think the best way to answer that question is, and I want to be very clear and not say something that goes beyond. A week ago in my office, I reached an agreement with the local firefighter union president, and this is where the deal points, and we've shared those deal points with them. So his, what I heard from him is that this was a reasonable, fair deal and he felt good about it. We do not have, I can't represent that the organization itself has given us concurrence. But I would say to the mayor and counsel is, we feel very strongly, this is a very good proposal. And because we've tried to address, all the concerns that have been raised to us since January, I think it would be helpful for us, and I think the mayor said it is. At the end of the day, these are our employees. They work for the city of Mesa. They work for this city council. So we make the decisions and policies of how to address compensation. And I think we've done a very good job of trying to listen to the local fire union, the concern about those in that six to 10-year period. I think you can see otherwise, we're very competitive on starting salaries, maximum salaries, average salaries. And so we think this is a very fair package. And I think once we say, once we kind of get caught up, what we're also committing to that has never been done since I've been here, is committing a long-term proposal to do a 5% increase for three years on the backside of this five-year deal. So we would recommend to the council, we would like to put this forward because we think it's important for our employees to receive these benefits.
I do think it's, you know, a very fair, and I appreciate all your work with the fire employees and making this recommendation, and I do approve it. I just wanted to know if we were at the, hopefully the end of that. I do approve going forward with this. I think it is something that is very fair and hopefully all the firefighters and the staff around that, we appreciate them and I appreciate the work of all our staff here in the city management and the fire union in working this out. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just underscore what Mr. Brady said as well. I think we, I want people to know that we accept responsibility for the compensation for our firefighters. We consider this our duty to make sure that those folks who work so hard for us are fairly and competitively compensated. And so the door remains open. We will always, in good faith, talk with any employee group or a group of, or individual employees and hear their concerns and in a good-faith way, continue to address them. So this is not a, we're slamming the door shut. This is, we're going to, the door will always remain open to talking with our.
Mayor, thank you for saying that. And as everyone knows, Mr. Pomvier, who leads these conversations and has done it for years, is always open to having conversations on this or any other matter regarding fire personnel. And so I want, you know, John's been working on this for a long time and I think it's very easy to get hold of him, even on his days off, as he told me. So.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
I just wanted to add one more comment. I know as counsel, you know, we are not over the employees and we just approve the budget and stuff like that. But in fairness to all the employees of the city of the Mesa, that we look at where they are in their subsets. You know, we went through a recession, there was a lot of cutbacks. I don't know if we're caught up, but to look at all employees and their pay ranges and step and all that to make sure we're fair to the entire.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, I really do appreciate you saying that because sometimes there's some very loud voices that only get heard. But we know there's lots of employees out there that every day are doing a great work and making a big difference in our community. And we're sensitive to that, just as we do for public safety. Every two years, we do a review of the benchmarking of positions throughout the city. And so we're looking at any opportunity we can do, we want to be competitive in those areas also. So we will be mindful of that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Counsel. Any other comments? Mr. Luna?
Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Luna.
Mayor?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris Brady, for, sorry about my signal. I don't know if you're hearing me or not. But I do want to thank Chris Brady and the team, as well as Dale Krogan, because he's been, he's been working really hard to come up with this deal. And I appreciate that the deal came through last week. And, but also I want to thank the fire union. Sometimes we don't, there's situations where there's not always an agreement, but I think this has been, this effort has resulted into something that's been very positive, something that they. something that they wanted. So, so thank you, Dale Krogan, for leading that team. And thank you, City of Mesa, for working hard. And thank you for our firefighters who work so hard to protect, to protect us. So thank you. I will be supporting this.
Thank you, Mr. Luna. All right, Council, any other discussion on this item? If not, is there a motion to include the staff recommendation for the 2021 budget motion, budget motion? Thank you, Mr. Freeman, seconded by the Vice Mayor. All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. Are there any opposed? Thank you. That passes unanimously. The next item on our agenda for this meeting is to acknowledge board minutes. Is there a motion to that effect? Thank you, Ms. Spilsbury, seconded by Mr. Freeman. All in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Are there any opposed? Thank you. That motion passes unanimously as well. Next item on our agenda is, and Mr. Freeman, we, your excuse, I know you have an appointment to get to. The next item is current events summary, including meetings and conferences attended. Council, I know you've been very busy. I've seen you out and about. Who would like to start? Mr. Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor. Last Friday, I believe it was, my days run together nowadays, yourself and Councilmember Freeman and I were at the Infinite Movement Arizona Defense and Space Technology Expo out at our very own AZ Labs at Gateway Airport. I wanted to thank Kelly Cuffer with Economic Development and their entire team for putting that together. I think it was a huge success, and it really highlighted our AZ Labs out there. And hopefully we could have more programming like that moving forward. That puts emphasis on some of the, some of the opportunities that we have in the city for others. And this past Tuesday, you and I broke ground on Electromechanica in District Six, which is only one of three in the entire state of Arizona electric vehicle manufacturers. And their research and development, as well as their manufacturing piece, is going to be right here in Arizona, in Mesa, Arizona, for their solo vehicle. So very exciting, not only for Mesa, but for District Six and the region as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Those both were great events. It is fun to see Mesa, Arizona in the discussion, the national, or really the global conversation about electric vehicles. So that's, that's a great fit for the high-tech manufacturing that we're trying to encourage out in and around the Gateway Airport area. Vice Mayor?
Yes. Last Thursday, I attended the We Run Mesa Youth Running Program at Eagles Park, and we handed out medals to the kids who concluded the program with Mesa Fire Chief Mary Camilli, and the police chief, Ken Cost was there, the Mesa Parks Director Andrea Moore was there, and many personnel from the Mesa Police Department. So I want to thank all of them for really encouraging these youth and showing them how special they are. This program empowers youth and teaches them, you know, healthy practices, not only physically, but mentally. Also, on last Thursday, I attended the Visit Mesa's Power of Travel Partner Networking Event at the Revelry with Councilmember Freeman and Councilmember Spilsbury. We had great fun. And it's the first time I was at the Revelry. I recommend for everybody to check it out. It's a fun place with lots of games, music, a great place to hang out. And for everybody out there, Mesa has a lot to explore. I'm always finding new places, new things to do, and I'm lifetime here. I'm listening to the podcasts the mayor has, and learning a lot more. It's always cool in Mesa. So thank you, and enjoy the city.
Thank you. If that prompts, I can't let that go without plugging, It's Always Cool in Mesa. Please go to your app store, or to your podcast store. We just dropped a new episode yesterday, so there's a total of four. There'll be, we'll continue to do that for the next couple of weeks. But there's some really interesting stories about interesting things in Mesa. I encourage people to listen. Ms. Spilsbury?
I know the vaccine pods have been mentioned several times, but my assistant Melissa and I were able to go volunteer yesterday. And I'm just so impressed with the incredible organization that happens there. It's a well-oiled machine, and it's just neat to see so many people come in and get vaccinated and get treated well, and then, and leave. And so Kristy and Michelle, obviously Mary, all of the great people down there that are doing excellent work. That was a fun experience. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Can I take a moment to put a little plug for this City of Mesa Renewable Energy Service Rider Program? So if you're a City of Mesa electric customer, you can sign up for this program in which all your electric will be from renewable sources. There's a slight cost. You can choose at what degree you want to absorb the extra costs. And I think I calculated for myself, it's going to be like an extra $10 a month, but I did the maximum. But every little bit helps for anybody who is climate conscious, what you can do to help your city purchase more renewable energy for our electric. Thank you.
That's good to know. I'm sure there's a lot of folks that will take advantage of that. Other comments, Council?
Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Luna?
Yesterday, I attended the National League of Cities Constituency Group Presidents' Meeting. We discussed constituency group policy recommendations as it relates to municipalities, and prepare for the constituency group conference, which will be held this summer. I'm looking forward, working, and continue to work with my fellow constituency group presidents to advance equality and inclusion policies throughout the country.
Thank you, Mr. Luna, for your leadership there. We appreciate it. Other comments, Council? I'll just note that I had last week the graduation for the Mayor's Youth Committee. And I encourage high school juniors and seniors to please talk with your counselors and your school administrators, and see if you can be on the Mayor's Youth Committee next year. It's always a wonderful group of young people, and they are very, very sharp. I know that we've had, some of the council members have joined me in hearing their presentations. And every year, they come up with some ideas that we end up incorporating into the way that the Mesa City Government operates. So it was sad that we didn't get to work in person a lot this year because of COVID, but nonetheless, I was glad we could have a graduation ceremony with them last week. Also, I'll note that I've been involved in a lot of discussions over the last week with Greater Phoenix leadership and various industry leaders, talking about the extension of Proposition 400 and regional transportation strategies. I have the opportunity to be the incoming chairman of MAG beginning in July. That coincides with the efforts to get the Prop 400 extension on the ballot. So that's something that I'm glad that Mesa will be in the middle of here for the next year, year and a half or so. That'll be a good opportunity for all of us to have some influence in that very important campaign. If there's nothing else, Mr. Brady, what does our schedule of future meetings look like?
Mayor, we don't have any items as far as the study session prior to the council meeting on Monday, as far as budget items. So we'll just see at our regular Monday time, which will be 5:15 on Monday.
Great. Thank you very much. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Thank you, Ms. Spilsbury and Mr. Heredia. All in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. We are adjourned.